Get going here in five, four, three. Good evening, Camby. Welcome to our first meeting of the new year, January 3rd, 2024. Happy New Year to everybody. If you please stand for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Father, I thank you so much for this great community. I thank you for the year that was and the we and the year coming up to be. Pray for a year of prosperity and good health for our city and for its citizens. I pray that you keep, keep us safe and sound as we enter this year and throughout. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is staff introductions. I will turn that over to our city manager.
Counsel, I have the pleasure of introducing Scott Schlagg. If you'll stand up, please. Scott is our new finance director. He started yesterday, so he is brand new. He comes to us from the audit firm of Grove Mueller and Swank. So he has an audit background. He'll have to learn budgeting and all that other stuff, which he's quickly doing. Scott, do you want to say a few words? Yeah.
Scott.
Yeah.
Come up to the table here.
I'm, I'm, and I'm sorry in advance that your new peers didn't tell you of that generally, yeah, we, we christen you by having you come up to the table.
All the way up to test the microphone.
There you go.
So as, as previously noted, I have an audit background. So I was with Grove Mueller and Swank for 12 years. Before that, I was with Moss Adams for one year up in Portland and traveled back and forth from Salem. So that was quite a commute and I had two young children and at the time it was just too much for family. So I found my way to Grove Mueller Swank in Salem. And before that, I actually worked for the Oregon Department of Revenue for about eight years. Also as an auditor, making all sorts of friends with personal income taxes. And then eventually moved on to corporate taxes. And so I was traveling around the U.S. and auditing corporations, trying to bring more money into the state of Oregon. So I have quite an extensive audit background and quite an extensive background with communicating personally with individuals and with education type individuals such as tax managers, CPAs. And in fact, I am a CPA and a municipal auditor. So I have quite an extensive background with government accounting. So I have good fund background. And so I'm looking forward to be on the other side of not auditing. And so luckily I've used to audit the city of Camby, but that was like eight years ago. So it was quite a while ago and there should be no independence issues. So I won't lose my license.
Scott, what would you like to do in your free time?
In my free time, I actually still continue to play men's adult baseball. So I continue to do that. I also just like to follow my kids around. I have my oldest is in college at Western Oregon. She plays softball there on a scholarship. I like to think I did that. And my youngest is a senior in high school and she has the aspirations of becoming an anesthesiologist. So it's trying to find the money tree to, you know, to pay for that schooling. So really, I'm just an overpaid driver, car fixer-upper, anything like that that my kids need. So. And basically my wife also works for the Secretary of State. She's the chief procurement officer. So I have an absorbent amount of procurement background, unfortunately. So anything procurement wise, I go to the pro.
Okay. So, yep. Good to know. Well, we're glad to have you joining our team and we're very excited. I know that there's transition going on with you and Eric and so.
Yes.
Really do appreciate you jumping in and being part of the team. So thank you. To the city staff members here, be nice, okay? Jerry, George, come on. All right. Well, welcome, Scott.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Glad to have you.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
We're looking forward to the budget cycle.
That makes one of us.
Said no one ever.
Said no one ever.
I don't know. I always.
Well, someone just said.
I'm looking forward to the mid-year budget review. That's gonna be exciting. I'm looking forward to that.
Next on the agenda is citizen input and community announcements. Opportunity for community members to address the council on non, non-agenda items or to make any kind of community announcements that they wish. If you're interested in speaking or addressing the council, there are yellow cards back on the podium. Please make sure that they get here to the city recorder team and you will be given your time to speak to us. Do we have anyone online? No? Okay. Well, if you wish to come online and address the council, please reach out to the city recorder or the assistant city recorder by 4:30 on the day of our city council meetings. Right. Since we have none, we'll go into the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes appointing member Scott Sassy to the Transit Advisory Committee with the term ending March 31st, 2025. Appointing member Tiffany Mock to the Library Advisory Board with the term ending June 30th, 2027. Appointing member Adrienne Carlson to the Heritage and Landmark Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2026. Appointing Amy Nos to the Clackamas County Library District Advisory Committee effective January 3rd, 2024. And approving the minutes of the November 15th, 2023 work session and regular city council meeting. And approving the minutes of the December 6th, 2023 work session and regular city council meeting.
Second.
Got the easy job there, Jason. Now Brian gets to say it all again.
A motion has been made by Council President Henley and seconded by Counselor Patton to approve the consent agenda, which is the appointment of Scott Sassy to the Transit Advisory Committee with a term ending March 31st. Appointment of Tiffany Mock to the Library Advisory Board with a term ending June 30th, 2027. Appointment of Adrienne Carlson to the Heritage and Landmark Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2026. Appointment of Amy Nos to the Clackamas County Library District Advisory Committee effective January 3rd, 2024. Approval of the November 15th, 2023 work session and city council regular meeting minutes. And then the approval of the December 6th, 2023 work ses, work session and city council regular minutes. Any discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries 4-0. Next on the agenda this evening are, are one ordinance this evening. And that's ordinance number 1615. An ordinance authorized in the city administrator to make, execute and declare in the name of the city of Camby and on its behalf, an appropriate lease agreement with Zimmer Ventures LLC of Camby. Or to provide, oh, sorry, of Camby, Oregon, to provide leased office space for Camby Area Transit located 195 South Hazel Dell Way through December 2025, first reading. And Eileen, I'll turn that over to you.
I'll call Todd up. No, sorry. No avoiding it.
We love staff participation. Todd, you know that.
I do. And we have such a short agenda. We need to fill this time up.
All right. Well, I have 30 pages, so I will spend some time. No, I'm kidding. Todd Wood, Transit Director. To, to just briefly explain what's happening here. So Camby began leasing this facility in 2016. We have continually rented that facility since 2016. That has not changed. The lease technically ended in 2018 and we just continued to pay month to month through that period of time. And we simply increased by 3% every year and whatever triple net, the triple net being the maintenance expenses and so on, so forth. Up until last year, when the county came to Mr. Zimmer and said, you need to pay the taxes because apparently, I was not aware of this, neither was he, without an active lease, we are not tax exempt. So this, and, and I had Mr. Doofman read this thing over and he said, yes, that is true. So. So this bridges the gap from 2018 through 2025. Hopefully we'll have that building close to ready to go or we'll be bringing this back to you again. So the purpose of this lease, it doesn't change anything I've been paying. It doesn't change anything I'm going to be paying. It simply bridges that gap from 2018 to 2025 so that we can regain our tax exempt status.
Interesting.
You'll have to ask the attorney to explain that in more detail if you'd like to understand it.
I would actually like him to explain it as to, one, how does that happen? Two, how was it missed? And three, this does create a stopgap and we will not have to pay?
Well, technically, the landlord has to pay the taxes, whether or not to, you know, he builds it back into the lease or would have. That is not his intention. This lease keeps us where we're at. So.
Counselor Patton.
So does this make the, are the landlord whole? Cause the way I'm reading, the way I'm understanding what you're saying is that if it had have been done a different way, he and we would not be paying taxes.
So we haven't been, so, so the, we haven't been. It took this amount of time for the county to catch up and say, hey.
You should have been paying taxes.
You should have. They have not asked for the back taxes as far as we know. They're asking us to get the lease in place. Then we'll send them a copy of the lease and we're tax exempt.
So it should correct it retroactively from when?
My understanding is they haven't asked for a track.
Uh, I think we need to make sure that that's covered because the last thing I would want is for us to say, we think this is gonna be okay. And then three years later, someone crawl out from under a rock at the county and be like, oh, we need to bill them for taxes.
I mean, they do have a courthouse issue. Mr. Doofman, any, do you have any input on this?
I don't, I, we can certainly do that. You know, how mayor, the, the, you know, the gap happened. I don't know. It preceded my time, but the, the issue basically is that if, if in these instances where a, a public entity is, is leasing property from a private individual, that will always be tax exempt so long as there is a written lease in place. And you know, this is the first time I've heard, which is fine, it's certainly the county's prerogative, where there's been an inquiry about that. So, you know, I, I, I don't want to speak for Todd, but I'm assuming that's kind of what led the, the landlord to contact the city and say, hey, we gotta have this bridge since the one from 2018 technically expired. Certainly can, can, can follow up with, with the county, but I think in the reality is with this in place, assuming the council adopts the ordinance, there's, there shouldn't be any issue going forward. And it, it really is on the landlord. Of course, we want to be good tenants. So I, I can't imagine that there's gonna be a, a bill to that effect from the county for any time that passed. But, but if you'd like us to, we can certainly, you know, make sure that that loop is closed with the county.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? People wanna, you all wanna comment on what Mr. Doofman just explained? Do we want to, it sounds like a matter of, do we be proactive? In kind of one of those go, go ugly early kinds of things or let sleeping dogs lie and let them, let them come and ask for it if it needs it? That's how I'm understanding where we're at. Correct?
Well, what's the, what's this assign? Because it's 2018 to 2025. This should close that hole.
Okay.
We can verify that, but we have, you know, our landlord's been very good to us. He's not, he's really only raised it about 3% a year, which if you know anything about the industry out there, is completely non-standard. Most people are seeing 10 plus percent increases. So. Whatever I can do to make this as easy on him as possible is what I would like to do.
Well, and this was elevated by the county, correct?
Correct.
So they're obviously aware of this already.
Yeah.
I don't want us to not be, in my opinion, I do not want us to not address the issue. And so if this is.
A minimum, the lease needs to be put in place. Whether, you know, whether or not they want to come back with this. I mean, come back and ask for the money, then it would fall on him because technically they are his property taxes.
Correct.
And whether or not he would then come to us and say, you know, well, I would have built it into the lease. We would have to cross that bridge when it came to it, if necessary.
Okay. And how far out are we, Todd, from groundbreaking and being in the new building?
That's a great question. I don't know. I meet with the, our architects next week. So.
That's a great answer. I appreciate that it's next week. That's good.
Not groundbreaking next week. Just wanted to be clear.
But there's, there's a meeting.
I could send Jerry's crew out there and they could start digging. That, you know, they could just.
Turn over some asphalt to call it. See, we, we started. Okay. Counselor Patton, did you have something?
I per, I don't know about everybody else up here, but I would be much more comfortable if this was like buttoned up a little tighter than saying, we're gonna do this and hopefully the county is okay with it. And they aren't gonna come back to Mr. Zimmer and request a bunch of taxes and stuff. You know, he has been very patient with us. I think we were supposed to be out of that space some time ago and we haven't. And he's been very good with rent and all that stuff. So I think as a good neighbor, we should do everything in our power to make sure that this doesn't rear its ugly head later after this. I don't know what other people's temperatures are.
Eileen, did you have a comment on that?
I, I was just gonna say that I think between Mr. Doofman and Mr. Wood, we can probably figure out a way to diplomatically ask the county.
Okay. We can do that. At the end of the day, this lease still has to be in place.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. I was just gonna say the same thing. And maybe we, we just talk to Mr. Zimmer as well and, and make sure that, you know, whatever we might do proactively, he has no objection to. I, I agree with Todd in that regard for sure.
And he, when they, when they redid the lease, just if you look through it, they did not put anything in there that says, they, they've been very clear about this is what we expect over the next few years. There's nothing in there that says unless this doesn't get signed, then we're coming back to you for the taxes. I mean, we could, but I will absolutely get in contact with, in this case, it would be Brooks Cutsford is managing this lease for Zimmer Enterprises.
Oh, really? Okay.
So Counselor Patton, to satisfy your, your question, if because it's an ordinance and we have two readings, would it be okay with you to at least approve it here on first reading that then they have homework to do and get it done and bring it back to us at the second?
Oh, yeah. I have no problem approving it. I just want to make sure that the wheels, like behind the scenes, we're making sure this is buttoned up.
Sure.
Uh, and then if for some reason, after this is approved later on down the road, we need to do some sort of stopgap thing, we could do that. But at least this is in motion because it's gotta be through two readings.
Perfect. I wasn't, I, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. We will report back at the second reading.
Perfect. Appreciate that very much. Any other comments or questions regarding the lease here for Camby Area Transit? Okay. Todd, thank you. Can I, is there a motion or no? Yes, Counselor Patton.
I move to approve ordinance number 1615. An ordinance authorized in the city administrator to make, execute and declare in the name of the city of Camby and on its behalf, an appropriate lease agreement with Zimmer Ventures LLC of Camby, Oregon to provide leased office space for Camby Area Transit located at 195 South Hazel Dell Way through December 25th, or no, through December of 2025 to a second reading on January 17th, 2024.
A motion has been made by Counselor Patton and seconded by Counselor Davis to approve ordinance number 1615. An ordinance authorized in the city administrator to make, execute and declare in the name of the city of Camby and on its behalf, an appropriate lease agreement with Zimmer Ventures LLC of Camby, Oregon to provide leased office space for Camby Area Transit located at 195 South Hazel Dell Way through December 2025 to, up for a second reading on January 17th of 2024. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries 5-0. Next is old business in the city attorney recruitment piece.
I have no report tonight on it. This is just on your item or on your agenda as a standard agenda item. So.
Great. Move in and take care of some mayor's business pieces real quickly. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee will be meeting tomorrow evening. And a lot of that is gonna be about the upcoming legislative agenda with the short session coming up here, starting at the right end of the month, beginning of February. So that'll be a lot of the agenda for tomorrow night. The Region One Area Commission on Transportation is meeting later in this month. Again, a lot of that is gonna be, there's a lot of conversation still around tolling on 205, the interstate bridge project and where that is at. And then discussion around the, we'll say elimination of funding for a lot of the state highway transportation projects that over the next, or I guess ongoing until further notice. I want to remind the council that we have a goal-setting session for us on February 16th. It is a Friday. That'll be kind of an all-day extravaganza with food, drinks and prizes for, for everyone. Next week, after the city council open seat interviews, we will be doing a goal-setting session with our new city administrator in exec sessions. We'll be having that. So there's things that you are hoping or wishing to have Eileen be thinking about or wanting to include in her goals from us moving forward. Please come prepared for that, that discussion on next Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor, a question about that.
Yes.
I assume with, with four candidates, we should be able to deliberate vote and appoint that night. Can we have the judge here to also swear in so that that person can attend the goal-setting session with Eileen?
I, I don't know. That's, I guess, we can have, I mean, next thing here on my piece is to talk about what next Wednesday will look like. So could you mind tabling that until then?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect. And I'll get to that here in a second. Also, that will be under discussion, not on the 10th, but on the 17th.
I just want to address some of the committee liaison roles that we have. We've got a couple that don't have counselors as liaisons to them. And there's been some asks by some of the current committees for, just, they had given me some input. So be thinking about the ones that are open. If there's ones that any of you are interested in picking up or making a change or whatnot. And that way, the, the new city council will take whatever we don't want it to do. Just kidding, whoever that is.
Yeah, which ones are open?
I do not know off the top of my head which ones are open, but I will make sure that Maya and CJ get that out to us so that we know. And it's on the website as well. Finally, for conversation this evening has been a couple of questions or some conversation wanting to be had about the process for next week's city council interviews. We have two pieces I think we need to talk about. One is how do we want the format to go? And the second piece is, I know that the list of questions that we have are up here. If there's things that we, questions we want to eliminate, change, add to, that way staff can get out the list of questions to the candidates here in the next couple of days. So first piece up, so I've had some conversation with a couple of you about the process for when the decision comes. I know we have in the past done a go-through, we interview everybody and then there's been the conversation of, you know, who may or may not be your top one or two candidates to, I guess, whittle down the selection piece to then create conversation about. That's how it's been done. I know the last couple of interviews, we have had it where it's been just jumping right in after the interviews, a motion being made and that person being selected without necessarily much conversation. But again, it's, again, another way of doing it. There may be another way that you all want to entertain. So I will open it up for thoughts, comments.
Be interested in hearing, we have two counselors that have gone through that process and what their thoughts are on how we can improve the process. I was disappointed in the last process and just the fact that I really didn't feel like we got good information in regards to when they came up, you know, because some people had done it before. We had a lot of new counselors, didn't know the people. And so, you know, I'm very interested in who are they? Who are you? Why do you want to be on council? I want to keep it real straightforward and pretty simple, you know? And so I don't think we need six questions, you know, tell us why you want to be on, you know, who are you? Why do you want to be on city council? And the last process, we actually did go around. Everybody did comment on the strengths and weaknesses of why they supported an individual. And I like that process. But I would be interested to hear from our new city counselors what, how they feel we can improve the process.
Well, if you remember, for me, I ended up showing up late because I didn't quite understand what was the process. And so perhaps I think the one thing I say could be, could be improved upon is each one of these candidates should probably be getting an email telling them what time to be here. Cause I was under the impression that it started at seven. I guess it was six. So I was actually waiting in my office just to go down. And then they got, called me and said, hey, come on down. And so I think maybe that could have been a little bit more formalized, maybe get, you know, somebody from the city saying, hey, this is what, show up here at this time, this date. So that way you don't have anybody almost fall through the class like I almost did, but I got selected. So. So that's the only thing I can think of right off the bat that, that could be improved upon.
Clearer communication. Okay.
Yes, Counselor Patton.
So I have been through the interview process seven times, maybe eight.
I think eight.
And I gotta tell you, it's all, it tends to be quite frustrating. So back originally, back in the Wayback Machine, how it was sort of done was everybody would get interviewed, people would rank their top three or whoever. And then each counselor would be given an opportunity to explain, you know, what that ranking was, how they, why they felt that way. And after that conversation, if there was kind of consensus candidate that came of that, then that was sort of job done. I am a fan of doing it that way. I think it's way more transparent. I think it is more, not only transparent for the community, but transparent for the people who are going through the interview process. And I don't think it bloodies up the water so much. I've always felt that the race to a motion or a nominee has, just bloodies the water. It makes it very contentious. So I'm a fan of trying to break that up so that, you know, there, there isn't that going on. Another thing I would like is, a lot of times, seems how we're doing it is its own meeting. And I had actually had a conversation with Counselor Davis about this. Is to give each candidate, give us ample time to interact with these candidates to really get a good feel for them. And considering they're gonna be our only folks, there's only four of them, you know, I think even if we gave them a, a maximum of, and don't stab me, but like a half an hour to really interact with these people, like a maximum of half an hour. If it goes faster, great. If not, then, you know, we give them, give them ample time to answer some of these questions. And then give each city counselor an opportunity to ask a question of their own. Um, you know, unfortunately, in this position, when you go into the grocery store, you don't have a printout like this when the citizen tells you, why is there a hole in my road? To say, oh yeah, hole in the road. Yes, this is the answer. You know, they have to be able to think a little bit on their toes. And so I think that would, I think that would help with that. And as long as the questions are consistent amongst each candidate, I, I think that would be fine. Another thing, and this might be going a little out there, uh, I think that the candidates should be outside of the room. Uh, I think that the candidate being interviewed should be in here. And the candidates that have not been interviewed yet or will be coming in to be interviewed should be outside of this room, not hearing what the candidate says. The reason I say that is because oftentimes the first candidate, like if they are, if they've really done their homework and all that, the other candidates have now gotten a chance to hear everything that they're going to say. And they're like, oh yeah, what so-and-so said. And then likewise, the last candidate, if they've really done their homework and they're last and they've heard the other candidates say exactly the same thing, they come up and they're like, oh, well, you know, you've already heard this before, right? I think that poisons the water for those candidates. So once the interview is done, once a candidate is interviewed, if they want to sit in the room and hear what the other candidates have to say, great. But I would advocate for those candidates that are waiting to be interviewed to be put in a soundproof booth somewhere in City Hall and then ushered in, uh, waving. And then we give out the crown at the end of the, uh, at the end of the whole thing. So those are, those are some of the things that I would like to see sort of changed through this process.
Okay.
And one last thing I will say, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, and this is something, I, I did have a conversation with, uh, Mr. Doofman about this. I mean, as far as whether they're sworn in that night to then be part of the process of the goal-setting, technically by the city charter, as soon as we agree that this person X is the city counselor, they're it. The swearing in is a formality. And so technically, once we say you're the person, whether they're sworn in that night or not, effectively, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Doofman, uh, they can participate in that process as a counselor because they're essentially a counselor.
That's right. Mr. Doofman?
Yeah, yeah, I think that is right. I mean, the way your charter reads. So it, you know, the, the oath, uh, obviously is something, you know, that, that, um, is important. I don't mean to suggest that, you know, you, you just, uh, sort of put that aside. Um, but to the extent that that's something, the oath, that you, the council would want to see happen, you know, before the, the, the new counselor does, uh, sets, has any right to, you know, weigh in or anything, I would suggest just maybe delaying the, the technical actual appointment until, until the night that would happen. That's cleaner in my mind.
Because I'd hate to have the judge sitting here that whole time.
Well, and I have another thought on that, so wouldn't like.
Thank you, Jason.
That's what I had.
Okay. Counsel President Anzler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I likewise like the process that we've done in the past. And we kind of did it last time as well, where we ranked, some of them only picked one person. But, you know, with four candidates, I think ranking our top two is sufficient. I don't know that we need to give a half hour with, my next suggestion is to not have six questions. Um, like Counselor Dever said, honestly, there's a couple on here I've already scratched off, in my opinion, aren't as important. And, I mean, obviously it takes a consensus of, consensus of all of us to decide this. But I'll be happy to discuss the questions if that's what you want to do. Um, but I'm thinking that just tell us about yourself and what appeals to you, why, why you want to be counselor. I think number two is important. What's the most pressing concern, uh, in Camby? What their opinion of that is and maybe an idea or two of what they would suggest is a way to address it. Um, I don't think number three is super important, um, to talk about in an interview. That's just kind of something that we can deal with in the goal-setting session. Um, do you have a specific goal or improvement? It's kind of nice to know if somebody's coming on with their own ideas of what they want to talk about. So I think number four is important. And, um, number five, I could give or take because honestly, again, that's something we could discuss in the goal-setting session because that's kind of, you know, our policy and how we work with each other. I don't think it's important in an interview. So if we're down to three questions, and then that gives us the opportunity to, like Counselor Patton said, we, we actually had that when I interviewed, you know, in the prehistoric days. It, every counselor had one question that they could ask. They had to ask the same question to each candidate. But there was that random question. And I remember what Counselor Ayers' question was to me too. I also remember what Counselor Patton's was. And to be fair, I don't remember anybody else's, but I remember those two. You want to know what color door I was going to have?
Yeah.
And Counselor Ayers wanted to know what I thought about Capred. Anyway, and so those, you know, that's, because usually you ask the same question to each one, I think that's important. So that would give us four questions, but also the opportunity in four questions, if, if we had a follow-up. See, they told us about something that they had an idea about and we were like, you know, tell us more about that. We'd have the opportunity and the time to do that. I think we could still do that in about twenty minutes per person, you know, about an hour and a half for the meeting. Um, and so that brings me to, since, since Mr. Doofman said, we could actually have that individual participate in the executive session without being sworn in, I am fine with that. It also gives the judge not, has to sit here through the whole meeting. He can be here at seven o'clock at the next meeting on the seventeenth. And it also gives that candidate the chance to have his or her family there. Well, in this case, it would be at his. I think we only have men this time. But that way they can have their family come and not have to sit through the whole interview process on the chance that they might be the one chosen. So I like that idea better, doing the swearing in on the seventeenth and just having the, the, um, prevailing candidate attend the, uh, the executive session. And with that, I think that's all of my ideas. Oh, and actually I will agree also with Counselor Patton that, um, maybe we have the candidates sit in the lobby until their interview time. And then they could stay. They don't have to go back out to the lobby necessarily, but, but yeah. Because there is a lot of that. In fact, we had a couple of interviews in the past that were pretty aloof because of that. You know, oh, you already know me, or oh, well, what he said, I agree with that. And I, I think you get a lot more, um, a better idea of who they really are rather than who they, who they're mimicking. And that's all I have.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, I like both ideas. I like Jason's idea of putting them out in the hall, taking the time with the candidates that we need and being prepared to answer any follow-up questions. I agree with, uh, Tracy in regards to her questions too. I think that that would be appropriate and making sure that they get the questions well in advance.
Except the counselor question.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Counselor Sterns.
Just a thought I had, and again, I'm the newbie, so probably it's a, it's already a strange thought. But I was thinking that it might be a good idea to wait to make the decision until either later on in the meeting or something to that effect. Because sometimes you like to have some time to think it over, mold over. For me, anyway, sometimes my first initial, if I'm, if we have to make a decision that night, then there's a pressure to make a decision even though you may not be happy with it or settled without thinking it over a lot. So I'm just, even though I know I was chosen on the spot and maybe that was, some people regret that. But the, uh, the, uh, I, I, sometimes these kind of decisions, it makes it so, um, it may be better just to, just to mold it over a little bit and, and not have to go make the decision right after the last person's off speaking, so to speak. But, but I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not, I just, that's the thought that came to me.
Okay. Counsel President.
Thank you. Um, to that point, I, we've always made the decision same night. Um, so that we didn't have the same situation of having to vote on it and then swearing them in later in the meeting and that kind of thing. But maybe just a small recess after the interviews. And you can do your own little mulling and then, then we come back and discuss and, and, uh, if that gives you some time to come to the dis- table, the discussion of the clear thought of who you like or need to review what you just learned.
I'm just slow, I guess.
Take some time with your notes all, over like five, seven minute recess and then we deliberate and vote. I would, I would, I would prefer that option versus waiting to the next meeting to vote. I would like to select the person on the tenth.
You're, you're, you're not slow in the update. This, this group is notorious for wanting to take in information, kick the tires, run it around the block a little bit and then have a decision on it. So I totally get where you're at.
We noodle.
Yeah. This is, this is a, this has been historically, since I've been on it, very much a, a group that noodles, things over. Sometimes maybe we need to noodle a little bit more, but that's a conversation for another time. So the things that I hear from you all is, um, again, some of the, maybe, you know, clear expectations for the applicants that on January tenth, uh, at six o'clock, six P M., um, will be interviews. Is that what we've got slated? Okay. Um, in terms of the questions, um, I see some, you know, counselors to the right and left of me that have scratched out some of the, I mean, do we have opinions on which three or four we want? I mean, I think number one, I think is.
One, two and four are the ones that I suggested earlier.
I would agree with that. I think if we give them just three questions and instead of, um, where did, it's what, two hour that night?
About an hour and a half probably is what we'll end up with, I think.
Fifteen, twenty minutes each should suffice, getting to know them quite a bit. Um, letting them, giving them time to answer the questions fully. Um, and still giving time to kind of mull it over a bit like, uh, Counselor Sterns had mentioned. I think three questions should be fine. I, I believe it'd be one, two and, uh, four, uh, five is.
That could, if someone's really liking that one, that could be their counselor question.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think that, that gives us an opportunity to have them have more thoughtful answers rather than just a couple of one-liners because we have historically held them to like five minutes an answer. And so now they can give us a more wordy answer and really explain how they feel about that one particular topic.
Counselor Patton?
Uh, I'm fine with backing three and five. I think six is just going to naturally come at the end of any interview, so.
Um, yeah.
But no, I'm good with two, three and four being the primary.
Two, three and four or one, two and four?
Oh, yeah, one, two and four. No, screw three. Three's gone.
Counselor Sterns, have you ever thought, does work for you?
Yeah, they, they work for me. I remember my interview, I think I was repeating myself a lot just because the questions were similar enough that I kept saying the same thing over again.
Yeah. Okay. So one, two and four will be our core questions. And then each counselor will come up with their own question. And again, um, there is the opportunity that if the door gets opened or the window gets opened, if there's follow-up, which I suspect that there should be, then whatever that follow-up it is, it is. It doesn't have to be, it's not necessarily have to be asked of every, the core questions need to be the same. The follow-ups do not. Everyone's okay understanding that piece of it?
Correct.
Counselor Patton?
Uh, I don't, I doubt this is going to happen, but just to be safe, when we come up with our individual counselor question, should we maybe send that to Eileen? So that she can like see if any of us have duplicated ourselves or come close to duplicating ourselves? Because we really can't talk about that behind the scenes because we'll be creating a meeting and we want to have it hashed out before that night. So I, I think that might be, because then she can communicate with us and say, well, you might want to rethink this question because there's a similar question to it, that sort of thing.
I, I would probably, I mean, Eileen, correct me if I'm wrong.
Or you or whoever.
Um, no, I mean, um, maybe Maya or CJ can field that, that email. I mean, thoughts on that, Eileen?
Um, I was under the impression that the questions might come out of what the person says, so.
That would be the follow-up questions.
Yeah.
The court, but the court counselor question has to be the same for each four candidates.
Okay.
Yeah, so whatever Jason picks, he has to ask all four.
Okay, then we're happy to collect those.
I think there's probably only a couple of us that would, um, step on each other's toes and it wouldn't be a quorum if he and I talked about that.
Plus we got to make sure the questions are not illegal or any kind of.
Yeah. We'll, we'll take a look at them, um, which brings up the issue of get them to us by.
End of day tomorrow.
I was going to say Friday.
I was going to say by Friday.
Friday?
Yeah.
And then they have to look at it on Monday and go, eh eh, try again.
Yeah. End of day Friday.
Okay.
I have a question, uh, to avoid, you know, um, doing something inappropriate. We've gotten, uh, all copies of the, of the questions and biographies of these people. Is this still considered confidential at this point? Or is this something I can discuss with people who are curious about, who, who want to give input to a city counselor on who the next city councilor should be?
So that is a great question, um, since it has been, um, sent out to all of the council. It's public record, so it could be asked for. Um, and so if someone asks you, you know, who, um, who is running or who, who's, you know, put their name in for the position, you are absolutely, um, free to tell them who that is. Um, and then the packet for that's going to go out here. Friday, probably.
Yeah.
You know, before the end of the week, so it'll be, if it's not public information yet, it'll definitely be public information here, um, more wide, sort of wider spread by the end of the week.
So we can discuss, I mean, just I can get feedback from people about how resumes look and that sort of thing.
Um.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm asking the question just because.
Yeah, I would say probably not asking, um, community input. Um, I think you can take the input. If someone comes up and says, hey, you know, I have a thought on candidate X and here are the things that I know or whatever, you can just say, well, thank you. I appreciate that and I'll, I'll take it under advisement. Would be the cleanest way, I think, to clear that up.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't solicit the opinions, but, um, we sometimes get emails from, uh, people saying their support for candidate X, Y or Z. And those go to all of us when we, those come in. That's happened in the past.
Counsel Patton?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like hand out like the resume of the person. And definitely it is important that the, uh, people's contact information and like their address and stuff is redacted. So not sharing that, but as far as who the candidate is and, you know, what people, what people's experience are with that person, I, I, there's no problem with that.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my, at this point, Maya's a seasoned pro, um, at the process. So I have no doubt that what needs to be redacted will be redacted. Okay. In terms of like just the time piece, I, I think it, we leave it open-ended. I mean, I do interviews all the time and sometimes my interviews are ten minutes and sometimes they're forty-five. Depends on the position, depends on, you know, the flow and the connect, the connection with the person I'm interviewing. So to Jason's point, yeah, I don't think we necessarily lock it down to like, okay, your timer starts now, read us your answers. But truly allow time for engagement.
I think we should have a cap though, to be fair to the rest of the candidates.
We should have a cap. You get somebody that's a little bit long-winded, it's going to turn sideways pretty quick.
Um, I suppose that's true. However, based on the people that have been up on this council in the last fourteen years, um, that's not, being long-winded has never stopped us from appointing somebody, so. Present company.
Present company included.
I was going to say excluded. I wasn't naming names, but, you know.
Mayor, that does bring up the issue, um, in terms of what we tell the candidates, will they all be here at six P M.?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what order will they go in?
Make them draw straws.
Maybe just, I don't know.
I, I, we've done it, we've done it every which way that I can think of.
Order, yeah, alphabetical, they're done, the order they come in.
There's a, um, there's an app that you can do. They've done it at work for, uh, uh.
A randomizer.
Yeah, but it's like a wheel and you can bring up the wheel and you can put the people's name on the wheel and then spin it. And so I'd say like either do balls or write it on balls or something or.
We just became a game show.
Figure that out, figure that out.
We will figure that out.
I was going to say, I'm sure.
Yeah, this is devolving quickly, so let me bring it back to you.
That's fine.
I realize that. My apologies. Yeah.
However, I, I would, I would agree.
It won't be like one person at six, one person at six twenty, one person, okay.
No, because, yeah.
Yeah, we can have them draw numbers, we can do whatever.
But that's why I think we should cap it so that, you know, candidate four doesn't have to sit in the lobby for two hours.
We can do it by application time. Who applied first, who came in second?
I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about, but.
Am I the only one that thinks we should cap it? I'll shut up.
I said half an hour and everybody looked at me like I had six heads.
Okay.
I was thinking twenty minutes.
On one hand, I think half an hour might go a little bit long, but on the other hand, I, I still believe we should cap it though.
Yeah.
Well, and it may not go a half hour.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I mean, if we want to cap it a half hour.
I was going to say twenty minutes, but you're saying forty minutes. I was gonna say 20 minutes, but you're saying 45, so I'm, all of a sudden Jason's 30 sounds really good.
Maybe we should give everybody 20 minutes, and we have the option of extending it if we want to.
I'm, well, I'm, hey, I'm just putting stuff out there.
Eileen seems to think 20 minutes is-
20 minutes.
20 minutes, and then if it goes to 25, a trap door opens underneath the counter while I'm asking the question.
Works. That works.
All right.
However, how, uh, how would we do with, uh,
Yes, only under your chair.
The rest of the applicants sitting in the lobby or in another room?
What do you mean?
We're gonna need somebody to be able to get them and bring them in one by one.
I can help with that.
Yes, just raise your hand. Just like that, you mean?
We'll have George laugh, so we can volunteer Chief Trow.
There you go.
To be, you know, the getter.
That's what he gets for leaving, aren't you?
That works.
Okay, got that solved. Next problem. You know, we're good, we got a plan?
I think we got a plan.
Everyone feeling comfortable with how this is being laid out?
I like it.
I like it.
Okay, great. We got our questions covered, we got, okay.
Perfect.
Now-
There's one last thing I'm gonna throw out here, okay?
Okay.
So in my research about how this process could be, it was in my conversation with Mr. Doofman, there is, it is pretty loosey-goosey about how this process should be as far as in the charter or in the council rules or procedures or whatever. And it's one, and my, my hope would be that maybe if this process works well, that we kind of define the process within those council, like, standards, so that councils after us have a more, like, paved path to follow.
So you're talking about this in terms of our goal-setting on the 16th of February to kind of-
Yes, I can bring that up at that.
Yeah, let's do that.
I, that list is getting quite long, this is-
Oh, dude.
Sure it is.
That's why the whole day. The first half, Jason's list.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this one?
No, I think we got it pretty dialed in.
Everyone's good?
Yep.
Okay.
And if it works, then that's what we write down on the 16th.
We'll move into counselor comments and liaison reports. Mr. Patton?
Okay. So now that Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's and all the other holidays are over, I can start to get my stuff sorted out and start attending the, my liaison meetings. So I haven't been, but been to any of those recently, but what I can say is that one of, uh, so the library tour happened on December 16th. I was one of the, I had mentioned I was one of the houses on that. There was about, there was a little over 42 people that attended that, so I thought that was pretty good, considering it's the first time they've done the tour of homes in many years before COVID hit. So that, and it was only two houses, so I thought that, that was very good. So hopefully, they choose to do that again next year and more people attend. So that was really good. The Willamette Falls Landing Heritage Area Coalition, I will just update on that real quick. I have signed up like an idiot for the projects committee, so I've put another plate in the air, so that'll be fun. And last night, I helped move furniture out of the old Westland City Hall. The Westland City Council approved the contract to re, refurbish or rehab the old Westland City Hall, which will become the home of the Heritage Area Committee, the Area Coalition. And so we're looking forward to getting that up and running. They'll have the old Oregon City, Oregon photos stored there and, and all of that. So this has been a long time coming. And then the legislative committee has been meeting quite a bit because they are preparing to move forward in the next legislative session, I believe, with the, the federal approval of the heritage site there at the Falls. So lots of work coming up for them, so that's been an exciting group to be a part of. The, on a sad note, the, I'm, I've been a member of the Canby Lions Club for many years, and there's two members, myself and one other, and he is, needs to step down. So as of next week, the, after almost 80 years of existence, the Canby Lions Club will be no more. It will be closed. So we will be handing over a charter to Lions International and shutting all of that down. I have been transferred, and as the only Canby Lion, I have been transferred to Oregon City and attended my first meeting with them last night, so that is, it is unfortunate, but, you know, one person can only, two people can only do so much. And then a question that I had, it, it was mentioned, it brought up the library district, the taxi district thing. It's been a while since I've asked this question. Is there any sort of updates on where we're at with reviewing those boundaries of the taxi district? And getting the money that we, that we need for, because like, we cover, the, the Canby Library covers more area than what we are getting tax increment from. And I know that's an ongoing thing. I just want to make sure that doesn't slide off the plate, kind of where we're at with all that.
It is a big issue. And it's bigger than Canby. So I think that the county is in the process of looking at the library district, advisory committee in general, how it's funded. And I think the best thing to do would be to convey, which we, we actually already have conveyed the feelings about the, about this issue to the library or to Clackamas County. I would say that let's, let's see what Clackamas County is deciding to do with the library district because it is a conversation that's having about the entire library district.
Okay.
So I would-
Put a pinback in it.
They know, they know how Canby feels.
Okay.
Yeah.
We jumped in the Wayback Machine again tonight. There was, what year are we in, 2024? So 2018? 2019? There was a big library district meeting just about this topic. And unfortunately, Canby is, it is a bigger issue than Canby. However, Canby and I think two other cities are the ones that have a similar situation where there's, their service area is greater than what they're collecting from.
Yeah.
And so the, there was not much appetite by the other members to open up, having dialogue, like, I mean, just having dialogue about it, let alone going to the point of redistricting, what that would look like. And then the county's position was, no, we don't want to open this up. So that's where it was back then in the couple of meetings that I went to. And so it's just been kind of status quo. So if the county is looking at it, you know, I'm, I'm envisioning a big Viking stove range, you know, and it's on the back, back burner for the county. But it is an issue that we, we deal with every year when it comes to our budget and what we don't collect in, in terms of library service fees.
It's come up in, Canby has raised it as, as has a couple of other cities. And so the county is aware that it needs to be addressed. Where it is in the overall scheme of things and priorities, I don't know, but it is, it's been raised here in the last year as something that the county needs to look at.
Okay. Well, I will just say that when it comes time to poke badgers, you let me know. Because I, this is one badger I want to really poke.
Okay.
I want to get this badger moving. And that's it for me. Yay!
Thank you, Counselor Patton. Counselor Maldonado?
I wish I had half his energy sometimes. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, I wasn't able to catch up with the bikes and peds this week. However, within the next couple of days, I will have a, something to report for you guys.
Okay. Counselor President Ansley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You already touched on C4 being tomorrow, so I will just talk about Traffic Safety Commission. We had a couple of citizens come to us recently, and one item, I don't think this was a citizen one, though, this is a commission one. There's going to be some new painting, and Jerry can correct me if something's changed since the meeting. But crosswalk paint at Fourth and Ivy on the north side. So that draws more attention to that intersection where people cross. And so maybe folks will slow down a little bit and allow pedestrians to cross the street safely. There's still discussions of one-way streets for South Second and Third. That's still being discussed. How they're gonna go about talking to the neighbors, et cetera. So that's an ongoing conversation. The other citizen that came to us was from on Knightsbridge Road in the corner, as you're coming, like, into town and coming up to Grant, that stop. The house in the corner, when I used to live on Knightsbridge Road, this happened, a car ended up in the house. So that's where they ended up with the Jersey barrier and they landscaped it and all. Somebody, back in August, hit the thing again and ended up with the car on its top in her yard. So now they have a giant, they're wanting some kind of help in mitigating that problem, so what was decided in the meeting and Spencer is working on, as far as I know, unless this has changed, and he's still nodding, so I'm still good. They're going to put a "curve ahead" sign just before the cemetery and then put reflective yellow paint on the curb in front of the house. Because most of the time, this stuff happens in the, at the night. In fact, the one in August was at night, it was a drunk driver. So if you're seeing something bright and shiny and yellow in front of you, you might think to turn. So that's, hopefully, we'll fix the problem. If not, we'll readdress it. So that's, that's kind of the conservative measures that they wanted to take to try to help her out. And finally, we had the Yorkshire, Yorkfield HOA come to us a couple of times about that whole area with the, what, Darcy Estates? All the housing down in the old Honda pits and the townhouses on the upside on, on Third there in Aspen. And between Cedar and the, Aspen, yeah. And that entire area is speed limit 25. But having all, I, I lived there, so I understand. It's very dense, very, cars park on both sides of the road. And for the circumstances, with as many kiddos in the neighborhood, and there's the basketball park right there, that cars are parked along the whole way, ball goes out, kid right behind it. 25 is too fast. Delivery drivers have argued with the neighbors, saying, we're being legal. They're, are being legal. They are going 25, but they're just not paying attention to the safety of the situation and, and the, or the danger of the situation. So it has been requested that we lower the speed limit in that entire neighborhood. Officer Miller, who attends our meetings, found ORS 810.180, Section 11, provides for municipality to lower the speed limit by five miles. So the, the request is to lower the neighborhood speed to 20 miles per hour. I will say there was somebody on the commission who wanted it to be 15, but we had to tell this person that we have to start realistically. Well, we will have to get ODOT involved if we're, if we want to lower it more than that, and that's probably not going to happen. So the request is to lower it from 25 to 20, and so I am just looking for consensus from my colleagues that we direct staff to bring us an ordinance at a-
What was the street again?
The entire neighborhood of Darcy Estates. So it'd be southeast Second and First and Second and Aspen and Arch, I think it is. So just, just south of the post office, that whole neighborhood down the hill.
So you know where the police station is? It's that whole, you're driving out to the police station, it's that whole set of housing to your left if you're driving out across from-
Yeah, and that's, yeah, the dump or the Honda pits, people call it, yeah.
And so they want to move, yeah, that is kind of poorly designed, I would think, in plain Maryland.
So that's why the neighbor, the HOA is asking for it to be, speed limit to be dropped.
Yeah. And Officer Miller did find that, that Oregon State statute does provide for a municipality to do that on their own without having to have ODOT involved with it. So we can do it by ordinance by five miles an hour, so the request is for a 20 mile an hour speed limit.
So, I mean, I gotta put my microphone on.
And I'm just thinking out loud on this. Having a speed limit posted from 25 to 20, is that going to actually change people's speeds without a lot of enforcement? Or, I think if you want to slow down cars, one of the best place, things to do is put stop signs up. That slows everybody down.
There's a lot of rules about stop signs. And we, I think we will have enforcement. As I said, Officer Miller attends our meetings. He's very aware of the problem and the complaints from the HOA. So I think that it would be enforced. And I'll just, I mean, noodle all that. The ask tonight is just to direct staff to bring us the ordinance, and we can look at it then. So, but, start writing down your questions for that meeting.
Counselor Maldonado and then Counselor Patton?
I, I would definitely say, I've been down in there and it's tightly packed. It's really tightly packed. I've almost hit a couple of people myself, just going through there at 25. It's, they, they can come out behind a car and you don't even see them. But now on that, we're able to drop it by five miles an hour. Is it just at a time or just as a whole?
That I'm not sure. I think I, that's a good question. That's a good question for legal or-
Jerry, would you like to join us here at the table? Thank you, Jerry.
Oh, yeah, Public Works might know the answer to this question.
It sounds like it might be up your alley.
Yeah.
Well, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I had a conversation with Chief Trow about this, right before I went, right before Christmas, in fact, and we're, we're kind of with this. I wanted to follow up in our leadership team meeting tomorrow on this, but I'm thinking maybe we do more of a recommendation and we let the city administrator lower the speed on this. That's what we've done in the past here. And that's what he was saying, that we can lower. We actually, several years ago, lowered the speed out here in front of City Hall to 20 miles an hour. And Trow says that's enforceable by that. So what I'd like to do is find out what the actual rules are. Tomorrow, we'll talk about it in our leadership and bring back, whether it's an ordinance or if we need to, or if we can just make the decision off a recommendation from traffic safety.
Okay, yeah, because that is their recommendation. And so I, I talked with Eileen about it, and she asked me to bring it up here and get consensus to direct her to get an ordinance together. So I guess I, I will reword my request and say, let's direct staff to bring us an ordinance or their, uh, plan of action.
I'd appreciate that, because if we can just go off the recommendation and change this, you know, signage without going through all that, that would be great. And I don't know, Counselor Maldonado, if I answered your question.
Are we able, is it, is it that we're only able to drop it by five miles an hour?
That is correct.
As a whole, or can we drop it five now and say that's still too fast? Can we drop it five again at a later date?
The way I understand it, and I've done a lot of these requests with ODOT, is that you would have to, if you, you can drop it five, and like, if I remember correctly, don't hold me to this, like, if you wanted to take a backup five, you would have to contact ODOT. Or like raising it, it has different rules, but if you wanted to lower it again, it would definitely have to go through a traffic study after that to go lower.
My only concern about having it be a staff decision is the public input piece.
Yep.
Because I know that we have the HOA that obviously, I mean, ideally represents the whole in that community, but it would be, so I don't know if there's a way to do that.
Mayor, if I could just jump in, maybe up here. It's got to be by ordinance.
Yes, sir.
The, the statute requires it, in this case, with respect to this five mile an hour drop from the, the statutory speed, it's got to be by ordinance. So that piece is-
Okay.
Okay.
So you guys are gonna have to be the bad guys then.
Okay.
Well, but then, like the mayor said, we get the public input opportunity.
It would, yes.
So then I go back to my original request.
Saying that, David, what about the one we changed out here without ordinance? That's what I, I mean, is that not enforceable?
So when did that happen?
Probably six, seven years ago.
And so it, it, it may be because there's a lot of different definitions about whether it's a, located in a residence district, what type of street it is. So I wouldn't say categorically no, but we may want to look at it and, and maybe if we have to take a, you know, a second action, whether that's by ordinance or something else, we could do that.
Yeah, and it is, it just, I mean, you can post it whatever you want. It just takes someone knowing the rules. It just takes someone knowing the rules to be able to get out of a ticket if we don't follow the proper procedures.
Right, no, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's worth looking at. It's, I just don't know. I mean, even with this one that, you know, I wasn't going to, I don't think we have to get in the weeds right now. I think the request is a sort of look at it and come back and if there are issues. But, you know, there's a definition here that I don't know whether even the street that we're talking about meets. I assume it does, but we just need to look at that, too.
Okay, well, thanks for the clarification on that, that helps. And we'll, we'll have a follow-up, maybe conversation tomorrow about this. Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks. Counselor Patton.
Yeah, I have no problem endorsing something like this. What I would like to do is, when we get the report on this, I'd like to see like a map with the streets in question highlighted, so we know for sure which ones they are. And if there's businesses and stuff that are impacted, maybe reach out to them to let them know.
No businesses there, it's completely residential.
Okay, it doesn't go into the industrial area there? Okay. So the other thing I think is, I'm trying to think, it's been, it sounds to me like this is not going to fix the fundamental problem of people speeding, because most people, I live on Birch, we've got speed humps. Now people have figured out they can go over them at like 10 miles over the speed limit and they're fine, depending on the wheelbase of their vehicle. So if there's like a basketball court there, do we maybe look at fencing? Other things long-term to mitigate this problem? Because I, I can guarantee you that just dropping the speed limit by five miles an hour is not going to stop a kid from getting run over. So I would be curious as to what a long-term plan is for kind of mitigating the speed in that area. And then I would also be a fan of just covering our bases. And if there's an ordinance changing the speed limit for there, we just do an ordinance for this out here. So that way, it's, it's covered and there'll be, there'll be no questions about it.
That's it. Counselor Maldonado.
I would actually agree. Realistically, we have to look at what other traffic control means we can do, whether it be speed bumps, rumble strips, whatever, something that'll help.
Or bump outs, I'm sorry. I know that the fire department is not like the speed bumps.
I see him over there shaking his head, too.
A, like if they're going a certain speed, all of a sudden like a metal child jumps out of the road and smashes their car, I don't know, something. We need to do something other than just-
Your imagination's really working tonight.
I am psyched, I am super psyched.
Yes, yes, I did want to say something. There might be a difference, as Mr. Duffman said, about the definition between this street out here, because it is commercial versus something that's in a residential area. So we can't necessarily, I mean, I understand what the request is, but we may have to treat the two, you know, separately.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I believe that's fine. I just believe that we may want to take a route of not just one traffic control device in that neighborhood. It may, we may have to look at two separate types.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's one question I made a note of. You know, we will figure out how can we reduce the speed in that neighborhood? You know, what are the legal means by which we can do that?
So I think we got consensus, oh, sorry, you go.
Yeah, just to speak to that real quick. First, on the stop signs, there's stop signs everywhere in that neighborhood that are already appropriate. There's, the only place there isn't a stop, in fact, there is stop signs at the traffic circle. So there's stop signs at all the corners.
Stop signs at a traffic circle, it's so stupid.
Well, it's not really a true traffic circle, is why. It's more of an ornamental thing, it's, it's just an island in the way. But anyway, to Counselor Patton's point, I know that the HOA has been discussing other things, but I don't know if they talked about a fence. So when, if they come to the next Traffic Safety Commission meeting, then I might ask them what other ideas they've come up with. Because they were talking about, I know they talked about signage and, you know, things that they can put in their yards and things like that, that they would be on the, you know, they would purchase because, as the HOA. So I can ask them what other ideas they've come up with before we just go down the road.
And I would just go so far as to say, you know, if a fence would be more adequate.
In that one situation.
In that particular situation, you know, can the city maybe do something to help facilitate?
Because there's a playground and a basketball park, there's two. And then there's just kids everywhere, that that's a very densely populated kiddo area. So anyway, thank you.
And I do have one last follow-up question on your thing. This rock, this boulder in the person's yard is fascinating. Can I, do I talk to Jerry with you more about this? Because I really want to learn more about this. I saw it show up, and I'm like, where did they get this gigantic boulder?
They had it delivered after the Jersey barrier was destroyed.
Yeah, I saw that, but I, I am curious to learn- Oh, okay.
That was out of their own-
I might just have to knock on their door, because I'm really curious about this boulder.
You can't put rocks on Birch.
I already have plenty of rocks on Birch that you don't know about, so.
Yeah, I mean, they gotta do it, they have kiddos. They gotta keep the cars out of their yard and out of their house, so. So I think that ends that subject, so thank you, everyone, for agreeing to do that, thank you.
Anything else on your-
That's all I have for right now, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Park and Rec, we did meet on November 19th. We had a good meeting. But I first wanted to start out with, prior to the Park and Rec, we had another meeting here at City Hall with COGEO. And thank you to the city administrator for setting up staff to meet with COGEO. We do have some updated information that had asked for an executive session to be scheduled, and I haven't seen it scheduled yet, to bring the council up to date. Because we've got some, well, we do need to update the council on, on COGEO and the possibility of an athletic field location. But this is important that we move forward with this as soon as possible. And so the city administrator, she said she was going to schedule an executive session and staff would bring everybody up to speed on this particular subject. So if we could get that executive session scheduled, hopefully sometime in January, so that we can stay on top of this. And the importance of this is that we continue to show the interest to COGEO so that we don't lose the athletic fields to another municipality or another city. But the city staff has been fantastic in working with, with COGEO and Patrick, looking at a particular location for those athletic fields. So it's all positive, but we do need to bring the rest of you up to speed on where we're at with that, so.
Yeah.
Couple of things I will say. I did have, or at least I sent out an email to Patrick today. I haven't received a response. Second, we need to just make sure that we have a bona fide reason to have an executive session as well, so.
Yeah, well, I think we do. Anytime we're talking about possible land acquisition, I would say is a reason for executive session.
Well, our conversation, because we did talk about it, was that, yes, it is on the radar to do. And I think it's, it's, staff is trying to finish putting together the details to be able to have that. What is that going to look like? So it is on, it is on the docket to get done.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Let's see, other items, Community Park, they're going right to town down at Community Park. I think you've noticed the gate's been closed, because they're in the process of receiving the new bathrooms and making the waterline connections to, down at the Community Park, as well as the A-frame down there. So that's why it's been closed for so long. But that project's moving along really well down at Community Park. Auburn Farms, it's, Ken reported, it's kind of unclear at this point in regards to HHPR, whether or not they'll be doing the design for the Auburn Farms with the input received at the public hearing. So staff needs further direction on that in regards to the design for Auburn Farms.
Yeah, I posed a question to the city attorney today, so we'll see what he says.
Thank you. And then Legacy Park, Exercise Court, still waiting on the bids for that.
We should have, we got one, we should have the others.
You're not new, you know the process. Thank you, Jerry.
We received one bid and hopefully have two more bids by this week or early next week for that. We've been trying to get that process rolling. We have the fitness, the equipment stored at Public Works. We want to get that slab board and go on. It's just, I'm waiting for everyone to kind of slow down from the construction season and want some winter work. So we've been pushing hard, so hopefully we'll see something pretty soon on that.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yep.
And great work by your staff, by Ken and everybody, too.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I'll pass that on.
And Maple Street Park, the importance of, we need to stay on top of Maple Street Park, so that when we press that go button, that everything, all the contracts and everything are in place for that.
Counselor Davis, we just, Barry Johnson and I just received some like preliminary drawings of it today. And we have a meeting set up for 10 o'clock Friday to get everything ironed out. So hopefully, you guys will be seeing a contract at council here soon for that, so we can be ready to go July 1.
That's awesome.
Yep.
That's awesome, that's going to be time-sensitive.
It is. And I was going to bring that up in our leadership team meeting tomorrow with the city administrator.
Yeah, thanks, Jerry.
You bet.
And then the Park and Rec Committee did just brainstorm in session, just items as they get into the budget year of different things that, to put on the wish list for the budget. One of the items that was brought up by Ken was talking about Wade Park, trying to get some additional trash cans, benches. One thing that we're in dire need of is replacing that bathroom. It's quite old and dilapidated inside and stuff. So the Park and Rec Committee's looking at that, it's a 20-year-old facility. And so there's a lot of issues within the Wade Park bathroom. So they looked at that, and the Park and Rec Committee's continuing to look at that as well. And then we also looked at, down in the Honda pits, the possibilities of putting in a pedal, a pedal park project. And we saw a film, basically a presentation on pedal parks, where you bring bikes and/or it's tied in with the, with the skate park. And Sandy and a lot of other communities have put these pedal parks in. And it can be used by adults and kids as a pedal park for your bikes and stuff, with some jumps and things like that. But it would tie in real well, something like that. And so I'll bring more information back to council on, on that as the Park and Rec Committee looks at that as well. So it was pretty unique and pretty cool, looking at the various communities that have put in those pedal parks. So Fire Department, getting into their goal-setting budget process, just like the city. Very busy year, this last New Year's Eve. Day before New Year's Eve and New Year's Eve and New Year's were exceptionally busy for us. You know, pushing well over 25 calls per day on those days. And seems like a lot of them happened after midnight. So it was, it was pretty busy for both police and fire, especially on New Year's Eve. The, just for the citizens, too. The Fire Department Volunteer Association does the fireworks. And this last year, fireworks cost, went up to $20,000. And so they're, started their fundraising for fireworks, for the fireworks display on the 4th of July, because we're in need of about $18,000 to make the fireworks happen again this, this July. We have made the down payment, so it is going to happen. But the mayor said he'd write the check for what we're short on, so. I figured that would get your attention. And just if you'd, keeping your thoughts and prayers, too. Tragic incident yesterday in which a Twelton Valley firefighter lost his life, was shot after getting off duty. And the situation is unclear, but if you see the flags at half-staff at fire stations, that's what it's for. It's a veteran firefighter, 46 years, that was shot after his shift. So just keep, keep that firefighter and their family in your thoughts and prayers. That's it for my reports.
So Counselor Davis, if someone wants to provide funds for the fireworks fundraising, how do they do that?
To go to our Facebook site, and you can either donate online or simply stop by the fire station and leave your donation for the Volunteer Firefighters Association fireworks fund.
And is that a 401(c)(3) organization? Okay, so you can get a tax deduction for fireworks.
Thank you, thanks for the commercial.
It's good to have an accountant on the board. Yes, Counselor Patton.
Something to follow up regarding the parks thing. It's jogged my memory, over a year ago, we sent the dog park back to the Parks Board, and there has been no updates at all. I think it's time that we get an update on that, because I fear that one of the impetuses of sending that back like that was to make that go away. And I will ensure you that it's not just going to go away.
No, and we have been discussing it at the Parks and Rec Committee and looking at probable locations for that, and working with Public Works to try to identify some land that we could bring that back. It is on the master plan, and we will address it.
Okay.
Anything else, sir? Counselor Sterns.
I have nothing right now to discuss.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I have another 30 seconds?
Sure.
Thank you. I just have a message for the entire community. This is a hard time of year. So if you or somebody you know is feeling down, reach out to 988 or anybody, just please get help.
We will move into city administrator business and staff reports.
First of all, hopefully you have all put on your calendar. January 25th is the Clackamas, Clackamas, Clackamas Cities Dinner. We are getting RSVPs from our legislative council, legislators in the area. The program for that night will be a legislative briefing on what's coming up during the session. So we're getting some traction on that. So please put, put that on your calendar if you don't have it already. I think you all received, and I received a big package of your stipulated orders from the Ethics Commission. And so it is time to schedule that training session. I don't, I'm hoping that we can schedule it for a work session time. But I don't know what the time of the, of the training or how long the training will be. So I've heard an hour, I've heard two hours. So, you know, if it's two hours and we did it in a work session time, we'd either need to start early or else we'd need to find another time. So I will be in touch with you about that. And I don't think there's going to be enough time to work it into your goal-setting. So, and that's probably a little too early. But we have to have it by May 17th of 2024, so we've got time. Let's see. About a month ago, the county administrator, Gary Schmidt, sent me an email that said that the county is looking for proposals from cities to hire, not to hire, but proposals from cities for homeless initiative grants. And I put out an email to staff and to our, to various community agencies, saying, "Do you have any ideas?" We have an idea from our library staff that they're working on, as well as from the Canby Center. So the deadline for, for applying for those grants is the end of January, we've got some time. And I'll be meeting with the library and the Canby Center to see if there is some overlap or, you know, some coordination that can be had amongst what those grants will be. We're not required to only submit one. But if there, if there's some overlap there, I want to make sure that those two grant applications support each other as well. support each other as well, so I just wanted you to know that we were pursuing, um, applying for at least a couple of homeless, um, homeless initiative grants with Clackamas County, um, and then, um, just wanted to flash that January seventeenth is your up, is, upcoming, um, is the upcoming budget, mid-year budget committee review, so we are moving ahead and I haven't forgotten that idea, so, that's all I have.
Yes, just a question about the homeless services grant, what, what is, would that be money used for, is there, are there shelters in Canby, or is that gonna be for, I mean, I'm, I'm just, was curious about what the, what the grant is, how much it is and what, um, what exactly we're talking about, any grant for spending money on?
I'm sorry, I don't have the total amount, um, of funding available, I think it's five million dollars.
So, we're applying for a five million dollar grant?
No, no, the, the amount that the county has set aside for, for all proposers to, um, to submit, so we may have a hundred thousand dollar grant, um, I, and I don't know what the amounts are gonna be that are coming from the library or the, or the Canby Center yet, um, I just wanna, the city of Canby to be represented in that pool of applicants that can tap into that five million dollars.
What would that money be used for?
This is part of an overall goal of ensuring adequate geographic distribution of homeless resources across the entire county to meet the specific needs of each community and prevent any one community, that doesn't really tell, um, I will, I will get you more.
If you got a hundred thousand tomorrow, what would it be spent on, that's, that's kind of my question, like, if you, it's, if they dropped a hundred thousand for that purpose, what, what'd it do?
By the sound of it, it's not coming to the city.
Okay.
It's coming to, well, I guess if the library gets a grant, then.
Right.
The city would act as, um, the over, overseer of that, if it goes to the Canby Center, then their board and director would handle that, yeah. So, that's, that's for them to.
I will, I will give you more information about what it can be.
I'm just curious about it.
Yeah.
One of the things that, and I'm sorry, this is an accounting and, and a economic, analysis, but in general, it's commonly understood that if you want more of something, you subsidize it, and so, um, that's one of the things that I think that some people overlook when some of these things are happening, is that, that's why would they give grants for electric cars, because they want more electric cars, it's a common economic principle, but we gotta watch out, I think, in my mind, if we're subsidizing something, is it because we, we expect to get more of it, um, or is it something that we wanna use the money to get less of it, and I, I think that as a, without going into any details, I think that's something that people need to consider, that in general, if you subsidize something, you get more of it, but if you spend it wisely, you might be able to end up getting less of it, and I think that should be a, a, a key concern if we're spending public money in that, in that way.
Well, and I think, to your point, Counsel Sterns, is that, the, we don't, we don't have homeless shelters here in Canby, and so, uh, more times than not, the, when we have, um, individuals or families in that situation, they're often referred to Oregon City, where county offices are and where those services are at, um, you know, I, so I don't know if, in the grants from, you know, the Canby Center or whatnot, if that's trying, something they're trying to do to have those services, but that's not really been their mission, um, so to speak, so, I don't know, you know, what that would look like, the only thing that, is that, is that process closed? I mean, are they still looking for people to submit?
Oh, yeah, 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 that, that deadline isn't until the end, the end of January.
Okay.
So, um, I just found the, the sentence, and it's pretty broad, the county intends to fund city-led initiatives around homelessness, so I think it's pretty broad, um, right now.
If you wouldn't mind, would you send me that link, because I think there's, um, we have a, I think it would be worth looking into, because I know that we do run during the winter, we run, there are a couple of warming shelters, and then in the summer, cooling shelters as well, that may benefit from, at least, you know, applying to see if there's funds to do that, to help offset the costs of.
Yeah.
Running those.
Yeah.
Counsel Paton?
Um, just as a reminder with the stipulated agreement thing, when we, when we do that setup, we need to make sure to loop former Counselor Varwig and Bangs in that, because they have to go through that training as well, just because they're no longer on council doesn't mean they are out of that, so, we wanna make sure that they are included.
Yeah, and I, um, I, I intend to, um, it, well, I intend to tell the leadership team that they will also, um, participate in that training, um, and they'll be happy to, um, to participate in that training, um, but I also wanna open up the invitation to our advisory committees as well, so, you know, I know it's executive session statute, but, you know, every now and then, like, you know, the Planning Commission might go into executive session, I think it would help everybody to hear this training and, and receive this information.
Would it?
But, but I wanna make sure that, you know, that, the, the people that, you know, the stipulated order pertains to are, you know, are available first, so.
I guess something else I'll just throw out is, you know, I know, like, maybe extending an invitation to the Canby Utility Board, uh, to see, because I know they get some training, uh, I participated in their training, but it was like super quick during a meeting, before a meeting, so maybe include them, and, you know, I mean, if we're having a party, uh, you might as well see if there's any other, like, organizations in the community that would be interested in participating in it as well, and opening it up to like Rotary and, and the Fire District and other people, if they wanna send folks in just to get, get an understanding of that, just as a community service.
Yeah, no, I think the more the merrier, the, the more the merrier.
Yeah.
Counsel President Hensley, you had something?
I was just, I was just curious, is this training specifically only for executive session statutes, or is it kind of, uh, gonna have any general public meeting law? I mean, that would be more, that would be something more beneficial, more useful for the advisory committees.
I think that it can be, you know, as long as we cover what needs to be covered to address the stipulated order, I think that is the bare minimum, um, that it needs to cover, um, if there's another topic that ethics staff can throw in, um, they're happy to do that.
Okay, I'm just thinking that executive session specifically really doesn't, doesn't really touch the committees as much as, like you said, the Planning Commission maybe, but.
Yeah, but it could be a little bit about public meetings.
I would want it to be useful for them.
Laws, yeah. Okay.
And I will say that when I was chatting with the ethics folk, the, the investigator, she had said that they have a litany of things that they can cover, and so, this is going to be tailored to what Canby wants and needs, and so, we can say, you know, we want a little bit of this, we want a little bit of that, and then they will customize that training based on what, what we would like to provide.
Yeah, so if you have specific ideas that you wanna make sure get addressed, please let me know on the side, and we will incorporate those into the training, yeah.
Great.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Next on the agenda, agenda is another opportunity for citizen input, looking at the citizens. No, I want it twice, moving on, um, action review.
You have approved the consent agenda and approved ordinance one six one five to a second reading on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I know, great, thank you, um, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Boy, here it comes.
No, I think we had an ample meeting tonight, I'm feeling good, I'm feeling good about it.
So, the motion's been made by Counsel President Hensley.
I like it.
And say by Counsel Maldonado to adjourn, adjourn our meeting, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's what I was expecting, uh, great, our meeting is adjourned, Canby, good night, and again, Happy New Year.
Now, if it was eight twenty-two, that could be a different story.